Kristin's given us the challenge. See whether we can make the challenge. First of all, I'd like to very much thank Susan for taking over the chair at the last meeting and walking through some pretty difficult stuff.
You went on vacation, you just don't get it. And I just came back from vacation. Not knowing anything. Yeah. But no, thank you. It was a challenge that we met that all of us did because all of us had some concerns that were said, and I appreciate them all from the commission members.
It was a very active discussion. I watched the tape twice, so I fully understand. Comments from the public? So either Liz, Elizabeth, do you have a comment? Okay. If either member of the public that's on, just to raise your hand, we'd be happy to have you have a comment if you wish to make it. See none? We will continue to move on. If a hand does go up, we will come back to you. Next item is approval of the minutes of meeting from June 28.
Let me see the motion.
Motion's been made for approval. Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion?
No, except that I thought Jennifer gave me that.
I was just gonna say.
I'm saying everything to something.
I was just thinking the same thing. Well done, Jennifer. All right. Given that, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I will abstain. Next order of business is the, what used to be called criteria, now being referred to as guidelines. And let me give you a little bit of background because I know there was some question about what do we want to meet these for, what's the purpose? And a lot of this actually stems from Liz's comment at our first meeting where she said appropriately that we were going to get a lot of requests, that all of which seemed to be, you know, very important and something that we would want to do. And we needed some guidelines to be able to help us sort through all of the different requests. So at the various meetings since then, we have taken the opportunity to, or at least I have taken the opportunity to take some of these guidelines and try to just keep a running list of them. And based on that, that's what was made available at the last meeting. You guys worked through it pretty extensively. And so all I wanted to do is come back today and say, in your package is the, and that was sent out, is a kind of red line version of what the guidelines would be. And see if there's any conversation or any more discussion that people wanted to have. I don't believe we need to vote to approve because we're just using these as guidelines, but I thought it would be helpful if there's anything we're missing, anything we missed from the last discussion. Susan?
Just one thing is, we obviously changed the name to guidelines because we were concerned that criteria might be that any application would have to meet every single bullet that we have here. And I think collectively we assume that you don't have to meet every single bullet, but that they're just there to make sure that we don't overlook anything.
Right, and I would go particularly with guidelines. This gives an applicant an idea of the kinds of things that we're looking for.
I have a question. So it says, will, wait, where'd it go? Oh, will ARPA funding leverage other funding? But in our application, it says program funds are not intended to replace other federal, state, or local ARPA assistance. Applicants may not receive program funding for project expenses that were funded through other federal, state, or local grants. So kind of, I don't know, just a little confusing.
Well, the difference there, leveraging would be like in the application that we put in for the Connecticut Communities Challenge, where we put in $250,000 and we're trying to leverage 3.5 million, is that what it was ultimately that we went in for? So that was, that is kind of, that looks at the leveraging aspect rather than replacement, which is what you, what is, what you're reading as part of the application.
Okay.
Other question. Matt?
No question.
I kind of would like to revisit the net losses versus gross.
Okay.
Does this imply that it's always gross? Or can we go back and ask for net?
What I, because the, what I heard through the conversation that you all had last time was that net wasn't, didn't meet everything, and gross didn't meet everything.
Yeah, so it's my case.
And so I said, let's, rather than try to put that word in there, let's take losses and then we'll review and see how that works out.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Melissa?
Yeah.
All right.
And the dog.
All right. So under, we'll continue to move. Under new business, what I didn't know as this application was being put together was whether we were going to have received a number of questions relative to, relative to the application. And so as I understand it from Jennifer, about 3 o'clock today, we have not received any additional applications outside of revised application from Social Services, which everybody has at the table set. Still the case?
Yep.
Any questions come across the transom that we as a group ought to be talking about?
I was just thinking, Liz, somebody couldn't at first find the application and then found it and said, never mind.
That's a good, that's an easy question.
We argued with Jennifer.
I had Jennifer.
I'll say that Judy's been doing a great job promoting it through her e-newsletter. So I saw it twice already.
She's on it a couple of times. And we talked about it at our last network meeting.
Mm-hmm. It's great.
One of the things that actually came up, I can't remember who was filling it out, but the, this application in reviewing it is much more geared to, you know, a project versus say, if a business wanted to come and move us. So are you picking up any, anything from businesses that are saying, geez, I looked at that application and I don't, I can't figure out how we're.
Not really, but I'm hearing more about project and growth kind of things rather than recovery. Yeah. Right? You know, one applicant said she has two thoughts and how should she word that on the applications rather than having two applications? I encouraged her to have a cover letter to explain what she was trying to do. So.
Can we just change, can we just put project slash recovery information and then project slash recovery title, project slash recovery location? Does that make sense? Because then you say community recovery category, you know, on the application.
Right. We could do that.
I think that might make it easier for those businesses that are trying to recover what they lost or, in a way, try to present what they lost so that they can grow again. That's, some businesses are in the process. You would say, oh, they're trying to grow, but they're trying to grow from the loss.
Yeah, they're recovering.
You know? And so investments is still a recovery. So I think that might make it easier for someone who's looking at the application.
So maybe we make that small change.
But I'm surprised you haven't gotten any yet. I had maybe three or four different businesses ask about it.
Well, the holiday is over with, so.
Yeah, yeah.
This is the new fiscal.
Yeah.
Well, we'll see how human nature works now.
Oh, yeah.
Casey. Okay. Casey, we are percolating.
Okay.
So we're already number two on the new business. And what that, what I wanted to talk about was the, I'm getting a sense that there's a consensus that this group does not want to make decisions about applications until there is a, until we are having an opportunity to see all or most of the applications come in. And so then the question is, okay, what process do we want to use between now and September 1? If you have an end date of September 1, human nature being what it is, we'll get a lot of applications in the last 72 hours before September 1. And so the question is, you know, we're sitting here on July 12th and saying, do we want to continue to meet during the summer? How would we want to do it? Let me make a recommendation, and that is, I did go out and surveyed everybody and people were generally available for this meeting, for the next meeting in July, for the first meeting in August, and then the meeting that I think is August 23rd. There seem to be a few people who are not going to be able to make it. So my suggestion would be that what we do is we plan on meeting in two weeks and then the second Tuesday in August. And what we'll do is get to you about whether we have applications to review. And my suggestion would be that if we do have applications to review, we could either do this in the form of a subcommittee, or we're a pretty small group anyway. We could all get together for an hour, take a look at the applications that we have, see what questions we might want to send back to the applicants that have sent, that have sent in applications. And we could begin to prioritize, you know, I refer to as bucket one, bucket two, and bucket three, and say, you know, let's put this in bucket one, this in bucket two. And so then by the time we get to September 2nd, we've had a chance, we've taken a look at them, and then we can look at bucket one and say, if we funded bucket one, do we have anything left? You know, and so we could actually be pretty efficient after that. So that would be the process that I would suggest we might, we might want to use over the summer, but I would take anybody's suggestions at this point.
I think that sounds great. And I was also thinking, maybe as these applications come in, could we put it in a Google Drive? So we could all have access to them? And then maybe, and my printer's not always the best, maybe we could ask Jennifer to print them out and pick them up so we can review them ahead of time?
Sure.
Maybe even we could have a spreadsheet in the Google Drive of where we might think things fall in, because if we're all in agreement that something falls into bucket one, then it doesn't need to go up for as much discussion or, or maybe there's a place for questions or something that we can do more real time rather than sitting with like a ton of stuff at the end of August.
Right, right. Well, that's my sense of it. If we have some time and applications are coming in during the summer, let's take advantage of that time, you know? And see. So Jen, right? I don't want to make commitments you can't keep, so what do you?
They see it all.
What do you think about a Google Drive and available documents and those kinds of things?
I mean, we have the documents anyway, so just putting them in a place where people can access them shouldn't be that much different, you know what I mean? Do we have Google Drive here to give us stuff? It's not so many ones.
I'll have to check with our, I teach right there on how that would work.
Okay.
Yeah, just something to, if I miss anything.
There will be a problem, I'm sure.
It's, yeah. Rather than you sending something out every time it comes in.
Yeah, we'll figure something out.
We could, yeah. A Dropbox.
Yeah. Yeah.
That makes sense.
And I can certainly print stuff and have it available, and if people want to stop in and grab it, you know, that's fine too, because I usually print stuff for the meeting anyway. And if there's any leftovers, I've been saving them and just keeping them separated by application. Sorry, started a file like that.
Okay. Awesome. Yeah, I definitely don't want to make more work.
You know, we do have a spreadsheet right now of everything that's come in.
Right.
So we're just going to build on that.
I mean, you do have two applications that haven't been addressed. If you have questions on those, well, one of them, you're just looking at the revised version now, but also the pavilion one.
That's for the senior center, right? I mean, the senior housing?
Yes. Is it worth it? There seems to be someone who's so opposed to this project. Is it worth us taking a look at where this project is going to be? Or is that just something that in theory, like?
I could probably shed a little light on this. So the, I have to go back and look at exactly who it was. I believe it was the executive director of Senior Housing, reached out to me because they have two community rooms. Liz obviously knows this too. They have two community rooms, one of them smaller, one of them larger. They want to renovate the larger one. They think it's about a $90,000 project. She's like, we're thinking of putting it in for our, I said, well, do you know that there's this other? Yes, I do. They said, I don't care, you can put in both, but, you know, there's, there may be a high demand for the funding. I'm not sure. If there is, you might want to, I said, do you want me to wait on the pavilion funding? Or do you want to go forward? She said, I'd rather go forward with that.
With the pavilion?
Yes. They may put in for another project, but she didn't want to delay this other. And that, pretty much that was the executive director of Sabre Housing. So I mean, I'm not, that's just shedding a little bit of light. Doesn't mean you can't go out and take a look. That was your suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, I don't even know where it is. I also don't know if it makes sense where, if we just want to say we approved it in theory, not saying we would, but like, is it easier for us just to approve it like in the spirit of what's proposed to us and then it goes to the selectmen and then they get to decide if it's feasible from a rat infestation or whatever, you know, problems there were, or if it should go to the, to the estuary site? Is that, do we need to get that deep into that? Because that seems to be one of the only projects where the site seems to be an issue.
Where the controversy at this stage of the game.
Yeah, you know, like the stuff that Carl proposed, it's pretty clear and straightforward and not controversial.
Yeah, like is there a likelihood that it wouldn't get zoning approval or something like that?
That seems to be, I don't know. But it seems to be something that's.
Marila pointed. Ninety, it's a $95,000 project. I can forward this string of emails to Jennifer. I mean, not that it matters. Then she said, is there a possibility of amending our request to include both the community room rehab and the gazebo? Are we too far down the line? I said, you can amend, but there are many requests, there will, I said, there are many requests, or probably, I should have said likely be many requests. And then she just basically, she got back to me and said she'd rather go forward with the pavilion. I talked to her at some point. I just called her. Said it going back and forth.
What happens if a project, if we, or if the board of selectmen ultimately gives money to a project and then it dies or doesn't get approved or?
Well, it doesn't get through zoning or something like that.
Yeah, or they, I don't know, for whatever reason, you're right, it runs out of its other funding or it doesn't get, for any, you know, right, it doesn't get all of its local permits.
There could be a couple things. Yeah, it doesn't get other funding, I suppose. Could be if it's contingent on other funding or approvals. So this gazebo is a new gazebo, Liz? It's new, it's a new gazebo?
It would be a new pavilion.
No, but there's nothing there now.
There is absolutely nothing.
So do we know that, it's already, I'm forgetting, has it gone through, does it need to go through inland wetlands or does it?
There are no inland wetlands there. There's the salt, because I'm on inland wetlands. There's the salt marsh about 200 feet to the north. There's the cemetery to the east.
Right, but what I'm saying is, has, has an application been put on a piece of paper and said, this is where we want to site it?
No, we can't, we can't put in an application until we know we have something.
No, actually poorly phrased on my part. Maybe someone should take a map of the property up to Chris Costa. Has anybody done that and said, hey, we want to put a gazebo here. Are there any issues with that?
I can do that.
I think that should be done.
Okay.
Good, good point, Casey.
And, and to your, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
It's Liz, come on.
I should know. There is one tenant out of 72 is anti-everything. And she doesn't realize that as a tenant, she has no say in any enhancement the owners, the board of directors wish to make to the property.
Interesting. It's also good to know that there are 72 other tenants that are there.
They were very upset when, after watching the meeting of two meetings ago, when she, the one who was sitting here said that, who wants grandchildren running around? These, these people have been deprived of their grandchildren for now almost two and a half.
All right. So Liz, you do that, okay?
I will do that tomorrow.
And just say, here it is, is how big it is, and put it on that. Chris can probably look at, is there a hundred foot upland review? Or, you know?
It's not even, that I measured.
Okay.
And it's not a fresh water anyway. It repeats saltwater. And it's higher than the marsh, so it wouldn't disappear in a high tide.
Okay. Kristen has a comment, but she's muted.
Kristen, you're muted.
You can't hear you, Kristen.
I was talking to my daughter when she came home. So the fountain I lost, okay. So just a follow-up. So when Old Sabre sends the check to a business or nonprofit, is there a letter that says encloses your money? It's subject to audit? Like, are we, is it, does the Old Sabre? Just want to, just make sure that language is in a letter, a cover letter that goes along with the check or something.
It is. In fact, we got a draft letter from another town, which I edited, I edited down, and it's basically, we're going to require everybody who has received money, and everybody who will receive money to sign off on this. And I, you know what, I'll get that, I'll get that to the committee tomorrow.
So they have to, so they have to accept the check and accept the audited financials or whatever?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
But do they have to use the money by a certain time?
Yes. The money has to be used by December 31st, 2026.
Right, but if, so is there anything where if their project was stalling, I would hate to see the money just not get used? So like if we send somebody some money and their product falls apart?
So let's, I'll tell you what, why don't we, there could be a lot of hypotheticals that we might look at. Let's take a look at our projects.
Yeah.
And then maybe if there's one that we identify that might be an issue, we can put that in a bucket kind of, and we can do better due diligence on it.
Yeah, because then at least if we had like a backup project, send them or have them maybe do more reporting.
Or maybe they will get assurances to us.
Yeah.
No, if we don't get that grant, we have reserved funding that we plan on using later on.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right. So it sounds like we're in general agreement about what the process will be. And if the two weeks from now, we still don't have any applications in, we won't be, it will be that we'll just put out the, put out the notice that we don't have the, don't have the word. What I did want to note is that, late last week, when, we got this either Friday or,
Friday.
Yeah, from Social Services. And this is, this was responsive to a lot of the discussion that happened at the last meeting, changes that had happened at the federal level because certain federal programs that were to end then turned out did not end. But what it didn't answer, and the reason why nothing is on the agenda about this, is there was a specific question about what was needed for the summer food program. And there's information about the food program, but it's not broken out as to what's needed for the summer versus what's needed for two years of additional needs. I did reach out to Heather to see whether we could get some information from Heather and Sue about that, to be able to bring to the committee today to say, hey, look, just for this. And Kristen, I'm going to look to you because Maureen's not with us, but Kristen and Maureen did talk to OS Cares about what they could do. And my paraphrasing of what I understand from that conversation is that OS Cares is geared to work with the individual family rather than to put money into a program that then goes and works with individual families. So yes, they're there, they're available, and there's funding, but they wouldn't be putting money into youth and family services to support their summer food program. So if there was going to be a need in funding for that, then the ARPA money would be needed. Unfortunately, I can't sit here and tell you what that number is. And so this application is for your information at this stage of the game, and we may well be coming back to it when we get back together.
I talked with Sue yesterday, I think it was, because she had had a question. And I think they're all, they're working on a summer food program now. I don't know where they got the funding from. I'm not sure that that particular thing is in urgent need anymore, but, I mean, I do think that she still feels that in general, she has an urgent need for other funding. So I don't.
So we, so we just need to get that clarified. And I'm maybe not asking the right questions in order for that to happen. So we will, in the next two weeks, we'll try to get that clarified and brought back to this group.
We have questions from Maureen and Kristen.
You're unmuted, Kristen.
Maureen is on as a guest. Just enough.
Oh, we need to, we're bringing her. We're bringing Maureen up to, so Kristen, did you hear what I said about OS Cares? Was that an accurate reflection of what you told me?
Yeah, let me just recap, because I was talking. Yeah, so Old Sabre Cares is waiting to get some applications in from when we talked with Sue Consoli, because we said anything that's affecting, you know, individual people can come through Old Sabre Cares. So she was going to reach out to them, let them know to make applications through Old Sabre Cares. We haven't heard if any applications came in. And then Sue was going to amend her application and resubmit it, because she had said that Old Sabre Cares was providing at around $52,000, $4,000. We never committed to that. She just put that down because she thought that's what we had left over. So she was going to revise that.
No, if I may.
Sure.
So looking at Sue's application, it would seem that we could use a significant part of the Old Sabre Cares money to decrease the amount that Sue was asking for. Because what Sue was asking for in the 200-plus thousand application is to kind of help people who are affected by COVID and and get them back, you know, house repairs, oil heat, and that's exactly why we started Old Sabre Cares. So it seems like, go ahead, go ahead.
I was just going to say, so she she took that out because she didn't want to double dip, but she put in there that we were that we had approved it to give it to her already, which we hadn't. So she was going to just take it out. She was just going to take that sentence out. But she did she did submit subtract that amount of money, I believe, from the ask. She said she told me she goes, she didn't want to double dip, so that's why she did that.
The 247, the 332 got changed to 247 based on the 54 that OS Cares can theoretically provide, is that right?
I don't think that's true.
No, she reduced it because the federal program was extended, which.
Okay, because I was going to, okay, so that's a separate. But it says here at the bottom of the first page that she eliminated the OS Cares funding from the ARPA request.
And she, part of the reason she had put that in there was because she felt that the application implied that you should list other potential funding that you're also looking for. And but then after she spoke to Old Sabre Cares, they weren't comfortable with the way it was in there. So that's where that will.
Right, so so I so I I think it's the other way around. I think that the 400,000 is what's in the application versus the deduction of what OS Cares, what what she was assuming OS Cares was going to be provided.
Okay.
And that the but the big reason for the drop was the fact that there's from 330 to 247 was the fact that there was a federal program that was she was concerned was going to end, which has been extended.
Okay.
And so.
Okay.
The caveat to that, though, is that the families that she can that can apply for that extended federal program had to have an application prior to COVID. And so there are some families that she's very concerned with that wasn't in the application process before COVID.
Just so this may be.
Get covered.
Yeah, this may be what she then is talking with OS Cares about, about the specific families that are slipping through that crack.
Exactly.
Okay. Maureen, did you have anything more you wanted to add to that?
No, I apologize. I have I'm managing several kids and so I have not been able to pay full attention to that. So I apologize.
Not to worry.
My husband's away and I had one son that had two extra friends over and my daughter and the dog, so sorry.
You're going to make it, don't worry about it.
He's coming home Friday.
I'm going to be recording, so you can't miss anything.
I'm going to tell him not to watch this one on YouTube.
All right, so we are so yet we have Social Services. We'll get this a little better defined next time we see see each other. And I'm on to comments from members of the ARPA committee. Anybody comments?
No, except I thank everyone who was at the meeting last month for their patience and understanding that there were like four people missing from the previous meeting and we had to all get caught up. But I think you did a really good job and I thank everyone at that meeting. And Jennifer for condensing everything so nicely.
I didn't see it anywhere, but it's a press release get picked up.
Oh, right, yeah. Well, we'll find out tomorrow in the hundreds.
Okay, yeah.
Find out. One comment I have. You know, we formed this committee. I didn't know what was going to happen. But honestly, I think Jennifer and Bruce have done a really great job, both of you.
Absolutely, I agree.
Because it's not easy. It's not easy to navigate this, to keep the conversation productive moving forward. And you two have been a really great team.
It's true.
And midway through, I just want to say that.
All right, agreed.
Hopefully it continues to work that way.
And thank you all also, sir.
Yeah, also, also.
I was promising Liz, I need you on this committee for like two years. That's never enough, so she finally got it. All right.
There you go, okay.
We scared you for the last two years.
A motion to adjourn.
Sure.
Executive.
Hi.